I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call please Angie.
Bush is absent. Chambers?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Eisner?
Here.
Lindsay?
Here.
Duffus?
Here.
Solomon?
Here.
We will move right into the action items. Number one, district return to hybrid model on Monday, November 30.
I see Justin is on. I don't know if Annika is on as well. The ad hoc committee met last Thursday and had put together a recommendation and I will turn it over to Justin and Annika to proceed from this point.
Alright, thank you. So I can give a quick update on our report card score. It remains at a two based on the Iowa County data as of Friday. And I will give it to Justin to give the recommendation.
Alright, hi everybody. So yeah, as Mitch and Annika said, we met last week, Thursday, as a group. I believe you guys have seen the survey that Kyle Carey distributed to the staff in the school district. So we reviewed that and after looking at the comments, the report card, which is based on the recent surges and in the positivity rate, our recommendation right now is to remain virtual until January the 18th. Based on a couple reasons. One being the continued score on our report card and looking at the feedback in the survey, there was overwhelming feedback, written feedback around how consistency is really key in delivering the best educational outcome. So you might ask why the 18th? So we did talk about January 4th, which would be the beginning of the third quarter. And the reason we didn't want to go with that decision was the school board meets, I believe, the 14th of December for their next meeting. And we didn't feel like that gave us enough time to analyze the current situation and kind of have enough data to pivot back to the hybrid or in-person on the 4th. So utilizing January 4th, that gives us time to meet as an ad hoc committee on the 7th to look at the data and then present at the next or the January board meeting on the 11th and give our next recommendation.
And I can speak to a little bit more of the timing. So we all will likely see families gathering potentially over the holidays. So that beginning of January would be right in that quarantine period if people were exposed or close contacts. And we would like to minimize the yo-yo effect, we call it, where we return to one method and then we quickly have to pivot back. I think the resounding message in the staff survey and from parents that I've spoken to is that they appreciate consistency and that educators feel that they can achieve better educational standards when they maintain one format. So for that reason, our numbers don't support being in person at this time. But I'm hopeful that if we all remain safe and do our due diligence and what we can over the holidays, we could see some face-to-face time in the new year. And we are happy to take questions if you have any.
When does the semester end? What is the semester end cutoff date?
December 23rd. It's the Wednesday that, well, December 22nd, sorry. The 23rd is a workday. So December 22nd. So the semester is done prior to Christmas break. Annika, can you guys talk about any other scenarios or options and why you decided not to go with a different recommendation?
Yeah, so our data does not currently, our report card data does not support hybrid at this time. And the really like the messaging from parents as well as educators is they prefer consistency. So they feel that virtual is, I think it was a very high percentage rate. Feel that the instructional material can be done and performed in the virtual format. So we just feel that this is both the safest. I think the resounding message from staff was they want to pitch face-to-face, but they want to do it safely. So I think that, and Justin, I don't know if you have the survey pulled up, but there might be some more data that speaks to that. One other key thing that I just want to make note of that, you know, I really believe in equity and making sure that students have equal access to resources and materials and, you know, an extra touch if they need it. And I was really encouraged to hear on the ad hoc meeting that students who might need extra support are still able to get it through through this period where we are virtual. So if there are people who need extra, you know, if they need to be face-to-face, from the sounds of it, it sounds like that can occur. And that made me feel more comfortable feeling that virtual would keep most of us safe. Justin, is there anything else that I might be missing from the survey?
Just looking at the survey quick, it was around 60% of the respondents felt that virtual was educationally the best path forward right now. Like you said, Annika, most of the comments start with, we all know that in-person is, at the end of the day, the best route to go, but resonantly, they do not, they do not, excuse me, do not feel it's safe to go back right now.
I believe, I don't have the survey up in front of me, but I believe there were, there was indication particularly at the high school level that we're starting to see a decrease in student engagement. As I think about a new semester kicking off after the first year, was there any discussion about how, how being virtual at the start of that semester could impact student engagement as they embark in potentially new classes that they didn't have at the beginning of the year?
Yes, great question, Joni. So I've heard from, specifically from many high school parents who have said they would love the format for the new semester to really mimic the natural school day. So what that means is have Zoom meetings at the same time as they would have school, like have a class. So it might not be for the whole, the whole hour. It might be a 15 to 25 minute Zoom. But so it really mimics the natural day, the natural course of the day. It wouldn't add an exorbitant amount of screen time to their day, but it would give more touch points. So that is feedback I received from multiple families.
And if we did that, what would the pivot potentially back to a hybrid model look like?
Yeah, I would have to defer to the admin to answer that.
That would, I mean, at the high school level, that would be something we'd have to look a little bit more into. Obviously, if we were going to change to a schedule like that, but that's something obviously that could be discussed.
Okay. Dr. Dunn, do you have a question?
I mean, my question is mainly for the admin team about this issue. If we decide to go virtual for several more weeks as recommended, can you speak a little bit more to the opportunities for higher touches for kids that are maybe struggling with the virtual experience? And even more, I mean, I know we're trying to keep the buildings pretty empty, but if the building is empty, is there any opportunity or option to maybe get kids who are maybe home alone or younger age or don't have a lot of virtual support in the house to be present on the school campus to still do their virtual learning? But maybe with a more reliable wireless, more structured environment, maybe some cursory supervision? Any, anything like that explored for some of these higher need situations?
So currently, Dr. Dunn, we do have a, I would say it's a smaller group of kids. They do come in. It may not be every day, but it might be, you know, three out of the five days and are using either the library or and/or the cafeteria to work out of because of that, those reasons, you know, internet access, a little less distractions. Mrs. Gallin has actually been taking those group, that group of kid, middle school, high school kids in the morning from eight to noon. And then that's kind of the time that we wrap up with it, depending on that. If they need the whole day, then we'll take them out to the cafeteria at that point. So currently, we are bringing in a smaller number, but we are definitely open to expanding that number and helping however we can, obviously, that way.
How many students are you currently helping in that way?
Oh, I want to say it's probably anywhere between eight to 10 a day at the current moment. So it's not a huge group, but we could, we could definitely expand it, but it's not a huge group.
And then I'll just pitch in that that doesn't account for students who are getting in-person services according to their IEPs.
Correct.
So this is eight to 10 students who that have been identified outside of an IEP?
Yes.
And this is grade six through 12, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Is anything similar happening at the elementary school level?
Yeah, something similar. We have a handful of kids that are coming in beyond students with an IEP. Similar setup, either when we have one student in the library, we have one student with a teacher while they're doing their Zoom sessions. It's at school. And it's, it's, it's really based on, like you were all saying, just inability to access to the technology mostly, but we're talking a very small number of kids and yeah.
So we heard the opinion of the committee, the opinion of the administrators or the recommendation. Mitch, do you guys share the same?
I'll hold my, I'll let the building administrator speak to their recommendation. Go ahead, Matt Redwick.
Yeah, okay. I would just follow, you know, the recommendations of, of what the medical providers are providing for us. So Iowa County's got one report. Our ad hoc committee's got a report. I think we also need to look at our, just our, you know, how many people are quarantined right now? How many people have tested positive? I think it's quite a few. You know, there's talk about spread, but the bigger issue that we see at school, we run school in person is be able to staff it successfully. And it just becomes extremely hard when we're sending home, you know, or keeping home multiple sections, multiple grades at the same time. And it just becomes less safe for everyone else because we're trying to do the same job with less people, you know, to be able to do it well. And we just, I think we increase the risk. So that's, that's, that's the challenge.
I would agree with what you're saying, but also I think teachers instantly just want consistency. Like the last time we were in school, one or two weeks, we went from virtual, then we were in one to two weeks and then we were all virtual again. And I think it's the jumping back and forth from hybrid to virtual where we're not seeing the consistency that we would like to see. So that's where I stand on that.
So the, the way to overcome, the way to be more consistent is basically to return to some kind of in-person learning at a point where we're pretty confident we're not going to have to go virtual again?
I'd say so, yes.
Okay.
And, you know, with the quarantine of students and, and staff, that's also a concern. Well, I think, I think right now, I think, you know, staff are to the point where they're, they're questioning their, their safety with a lot of the different cases that, that we've had, especially in the last two to three weeks.
So I'll talk next. My recommendation would be to follow the ad hoc committee's recommendation. I know Nurse Lindsay shared with us last week that the first two months of school, we had 19 or 20 cases. And in the last two weeks, we've had more than 20 cases alone. So she's in support of the ad hoc committee recommendation. And I will say that I think for me, supporting our teachers and supporting students, I agree with the yo-yoing. It's extremely hard to come back and then move, pivot to a different model and trying to pivot back and forth. And Nurse Lindsay's pretty sure that if we were to come back anytime, like if we were to come back next week, we would be recommending to close in a very short time. And I think that would be very hard on the staff and the students.
I would, I mean, I would echo those thoughts. It is tough with the yo-yoing effect. Even when we were back in for that next two-week period, it was difficult because we had, you know, half the class there on that certain day and half the class out because we do have kids that are so involved with everything, which is awesome to see. But it's really tough when we had those groups of 10 and we had, you know, three kids in class and seven kids on the screen or vice versa. And that's really tough for teachers to give their full attention and effort to that entire group when half of them are on the screen and half of them are in person. So that was really tough to do. So I would, I would follow those recommendations or go along with that.
And I will just say that our community numbers are not great right now. So, you know, I think the report card, you know, if any of you have kind of looked at it or looked closely, our score remains a two. For us to drop below a two and to be in virtual, it's a one or two. Again, our recommendations. But to drop below a two, it would require us to have like a infrastructure failure in testing supplies. So if we ever got to a one, it would be either very catastrophic or healthcare providers locally would choose not to be testing. So I think a two is hopefully the minimum score we will see. And again, then if we got up to a three, that would indicate, you know, maybe safer rates in our community. But everything that I've seen from the models at present, from the state level to locally, really tells me that it is not currently safe to be, have students or staff in schools without quickly having to pivot again to a virtual shutdown.
And after meeting with Iowa County, my original recommendation was, was going to be that we extend at least one more week after Thanksgiving, based on Iowa County's recommendation. And to speak to Matt's point, when we had our athletes, our high school athletes on quarantine for the 14 days, that was an extra burden on staff, at least at this level, having just a handful of kids in-house and then connecting virtually at the same time with the athletes off-site. Debbie Sigathoff from Iowa County was recommending potentially extending that through Christmas break. And then when we hit, when we hit with our football team dating to now quarantine for 14 days and then continuing to see emails from Nurse Lindsay on the number of staff members and students that need to quarantine and return dates, I would look to push beyond that, that one week window. I know some districts are looking at coming back between, some districts are taking off the week after Thanksgiving and hoping to get back in for some face-to-face. Other districts are taking their middle school, high school and just keeping them virtual until I believe in their, in their school districts, probably the start of the second semester for them because there is a a January return date for some face-to-face instruction for another one of the surrounding districts. You know, to Joni's point, I was hoping that we could be face-to-face to start second semester, but January, January 1st is a Friday. We start school on Monday. Does that, does that buy us enough time after that holiday gathering experience? I'm not the expert, but I just, I don't know that we want to hit a target, come back and then in two weeks have to turn and go back to virtual again. I think that would be devastating for all people involved.
I mean, you all make some very good points. However, there hasn't been much discussion on the social welfare, social interaction of our students and the overall, the overall mental welfare of our students. Is anybody worried? I mean, this, this time of year?
I believe Caitlin Alrich sent out an email to all board members, our school psychologist, that how they're, she's, that's a concern that she has and staff members have and that they are reaching out to students for their social, emotional wellbeing.
But in your mind, do you think that's enough?
Yeah, boy, there ain't a perfect world. I'd bring everybody back.
And I understand, but Jan- January 18th is what I heard. That seemed, that's seven weeks away. You're going to tell these kids now, well, we're going to take off approximately another two months. And I understand the numbers right now and, and I, I want everybody to be safe as much as anybody. But I think we're putting, putting our kids at risk. And just saying what's, we're going to do was, we think is the easiest.
So I think Caitlin is on tonight, but I, I know I am, so I'll speak on behalf. I know Caitlin and our counselors, myself, many of the administrators are working hard to try and come up with different ways to meet our students' needs. So for instance, at the middle school, they've started a get-to-know-you weekly Zoom that any middle school student can join where they're with some teachers, they're with peers, they're just, last week, they were playing Pictionary, just an opportunity to get to kind of hang out with peers in a different environment, maybe get to meet some students that they hadn't met in a different grade, get to know their teachers a little better. At the elementary school, I know Caitlin's put out a call to work on lining up almost like mentor buddies with teachers or students who maybe need some additional support, even beyond just academics, some social, emotional coming up with activities that we could do safely through Zoom or in small groups to provide opportunities for our students. So I want to just reiterate that it's not something that we are taking lightly. We're trying to become creative in how we're meeting the, the needs and the supports for our students. All of our teachers are getting on board whenever we approach anybody. We send out a call for, are people willing to do this? Are you willing to help out in this new way? Teachers are stepping up even when they're already overloaded with other things on their plate. So the social, emotional needs of our students is a high priority for everyone right now. And we're trying to come up with new ways to meet that in a challenging environment. And if Caitlin is on, please feel free to, I thought I saw her, you know, feel free to add anything you'd like, Caitlin.
Hi, I, I am on. My internet is a little bit unstable, so I apologize if I cut out. But yeah, I guess I would like to add that I've also been open to talking with parents about ways that this can be supported within their within environments at home. And I'm also happy to talk with anybody that brings up concerns around students. I know that this is definitely hard on us as adults and I worry a lot about our students' mental health. But I think as long as we can be creative with our solutions and especially thinking about the pivot to all virtual, I would say that when I reached out to staff who would be willing to support our student needs, there was a higher availability if we were to stay all virtual because they would know of their consistent schedule. And I think that that would also, if we were to switch to staying for two months, that would help us to know that this is a longer-term need versus going back and forth. And we could get some stable interventions in place for the kids that need it the most.
And I think ad hoc committee, and I feel like just an optic, I know there was a lot of conversation around, well, second semester starts January 4th. So let's, let's look at that as our target date. Let's, we'll take, if we recommend this, then through conversations, it was, well, we can't, we're not going to meet that week over Christmas break as a committee. And we'd like to look at the numbers. So then let's look at January 11th, that Monday, as the target date. And that's the day you guys meet as a board to make a decision, depending on what happens tonight. So then that's when, through the conversations, they said, well, instead of making a decision at seven, eight, nine o'clock at night on Monday night and saying, yeah, we're going to start school on Tuesday, the 12th, the conversation brought around to say, alright, let's look at that following Monday as the start date. Then that, that way everybody knows that, that one less, that one extra layer of consistency. And Justin and Annika, correct me if I misinterpreted that conversation from the ad hoc committee.
No, I think you said it correctly.
So I think that's how it got moved back to that, to that particular date.
I understand, but let's talk about between Thanksgiving and Christmas though. It doesn't sound like there's any support getting kids back in school, at least for a week. Just, just, just for the social interaction aspect of it. That's too cumbersome, basically.
I don't know that it's cumbersome, I think, to, to listen to the people in the ad hoc committee, to read through the survey of the staff members, to listen to the other administrators. It's that if everybody gets together over Thanksgiving, a week buys that incubation time, doctor, help me?
Yep.
So that if people are, do become sick due to contacts over Thanksgiving, that, that week helps some of those symptoms develop. Then it's, it's the safety, is it bouncing back and forth? If somebody, well, I'm waiting for my test results. I haven't heard anything. So I'm going to go to school today and then I'm in school Monday and Tuesday and then I get a call from a testing agency that says I'm positive. Anybody that I was around Monday, Tuesday, now is a close contact of me. So now they have to quarantine, which is kind of what had happened to us when we were virtual the first time and then came back. But as I said, our issues that forced us to go virtual medically took care of themselves. We were ready to come back, but then we started to have some of those kinds of scenarios play out where.
And, you know, and I understand the risk and it was the very last meeting here. We talked again about the social interaction with our athletes, getting the kids back in, in sports, winter sports program. That only entails, you know, it's a big mover, I understand, but in the big scheme of things, I don't know if it's, it's 20% of our student population that are athletes. I don't think it's that high, but it seems, it seems like it should be as important for the rest of the students for the same reasons. And, and I'm hearing a lot of, well, we don't want to meet between the holidays because we're on vacation or, or whatever the excuses are. It just seems like it's, the easiest thing to do is push it out till January 18th. And I, and I think that's doing our kids a big disservice. And I'm not saying that will be the end result.
Right.
But to know what, what's going to happen locally in two months?
I, I don't think there's one board member that would.
I uh, I don't think there's one board member that would not be willing to meet again between now and then. I personally. Almost two months, I. It's kind of like Larry said, I can't make that call that, that I, I respect all of the information and all the data points, but. To go almost two months and pull the plug on it right now, if we had a different system in place. Kind of like Annika had mentioned, and, and we talked to Matt Austin about last meeting as far as fifteen or twenty minutes. Regular class schedule, I could see that if we had something like that in place, but right now to go with this virtual program for two months. Almost two months, I personally don't think I can support that decision right now. I just, that's just me. I think that's a. I'd, I'd maybe meet halfway and say, hey, let's meet again on Friday night or whatever, I don't care, but. That's my personal thoughts on it. I think that's a huge call to make that for almost two months. Just my opinion.
I just want to add one other thing. We're meeting. Wh- when is our December meeting Mitch?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth, we're meeting on the fourteenth anyhow, and, and I, and I. And I can understand if the board wants to go virtual through, from Thanksgiving to Christmas. I, I can understand that, but uh. On the fourteenth, we, we still can have a discussion about what we know at the time. The news on the vaccine front. Our local numbers.
I think that makes great sense.
So can I ask, is that, Larry, I get, get where you're coming from. Is, is your concern that, that first two weeks of January? You just feel like that, that part is too long?
Well, it's kind of a two-part issue I have. It's, it's, I, I would really like to see our kids. In school, at least a week between Thanksgiving and Christmas, just, just for. Believe it or not, it'll be a vacation for some to get back in school in, in a way, and it's that, it's that important to me. I don't think the board is going to go there, so no, no use even. Talking about it, but uh, the. The system has to be in place to monitor these kids. And their social, mental welfare.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't know if you had a chance to listen to the uh. Our meeting from Thursday, but. I mean, just listening to Matt on our team who's in eighth grade, I. I mean, the way he talked about the virtual experience was very eye-opening, you, just the positivity about it. Now it's just one. It's one eighth grader, and I think we need to really keep our eye on the social aspect like you talked about. I'm just. I'm open to talking about other solutions and, and ideas, but.
And Justin, don't you think parents, joining some of the best at the, at the last meeting, um, have become. Parents have become complacent? I mean, we're, we're dealt this, so if this, this is what we gotta. Put up with until we get back to normal, this is what we have to do, and parents are afraid to say anything, uh, voice their opinion. I. I, I think there's a lot of that, Justin, and that.
Yeah.
Guys taking that into account when you're making your decisions.
Oh, I mean, I would say yes. I mean, you have parents on the ad hoc committee, teachers are parents of students. The part I struggle with is if we send kids back and teachers get sick. We're still back in the same situation, aren't we? Like, this school shuts down.
Just, if we decide if this, if this board decides to go back January fourth.
Yeah.
And, and the. The dashboard or the report card score or whatever says differently in between Christmas and New Year's. We, we can always take another look at it. I'm saying we, we do not know what's going to happen. A month from now versus two months from now.
Yeah. Right, right. I guess that's what led me to my initial question. It, it sounded like you were in support of staying virtual through. Pretty much the end of the, end of the year, we'll call it, but it was that. January one through January eighteenth, where you just felt that was just a little too extreme.
That, that is a fair, a fair statement, Justin.
Okay.
And I'll chime, I'll chime in right now. Um, I was all, I was since supportive staying virtual till the eighteenth until I heard what Mr. Wainwright said. Basically pushing it back another week of virtual because you didn't think you'd have enough time because of the one meeting. We can call a meeting anytime. I'm available to meet anytime. We met in October to discuss, discuss sports on a basically a five hour notice. So I think that's a terrible way to look at, well, we can have time for a meeting, so let's just stay virtual another week. That is a complete disservice to the people of this community. And quite frankly, it just, quite, this has nothing to do with ad hoc committee. I just, because this wasn't made by the ad hoc committee. And I just don't think that's fair to the community at all. I do. Respect and I totally agree with everybody saying the yo-yo effect of going from virtual to hybrid. I totally, totally believe that. Consistency is key. I get it. But at some point, we gotta, we gotta look at the situation here and say, so if we stay to the, if we stay virtual to the eighteenth. What's going to be the excuse then? Because I don't want to hear nothing about a report card. Everybody's going to be home, everybody's going to be away from school. So any cases that come up through that time are not school related. That is your personal time. So I don't want to hear no excuses come January eighteenth as to why we have to stay virtual now.
Okay, well, I. I guess I would add, it's. I, I haven't heard any other solutions. If, if that's what the board feels, I mean, we're giving a recommendation that's based on data. If the board says we should do January fourth. I guess you guys can vote on that. And the comment about not finding, we don't want to wait to have another meeting or whatnot, that was more about the. The incubation of families getting together over the holidays. It's, we're not going to see the effect until people are incubated. I'll meet any of the day of the week like you just said yourself.
Yeah, if I can. I, I, I totally agree with Gary's point that we shouldn't delay things just to head to her. You know, for sake of a calendar or a meeting. Uh, but to Justin's point, my, my, my view of extending the virtual. Into the first two weeks of the second semester is simply to um, allow a. Quarantine period, so to speak, from. Being home with mixed households, interacting with grandparents and cousins and, and whatever. And, and teachers doing the same and giving them a chance to potentially develop symptoms and. You know, get tested and know whether they've gotten it or not, um, so that we know whether we have a full, healthy staff. To reopen, um, and we know, you know, what kids are sick. So. Um, you know, I think that can be debated, you know, as far as whether that's appropriate or not. Um, but to me, that's the main reason to not, to, to delay two weeks. Of returning to second semester is to allow these cases to kind of sort themselves out and people who infected each other over the whole break. Um, can kind of declare themselves. So um, my second point is. About what we don't know, you know, going the next couple of months. Um. Uh, I think. Uh, I, I mean, I feel pretty confident that this high level of cases is going to take a long time to go away. You know, just to put this in perspective, uh, when we started school in August, we were averaging probably. Two cases a day in the county. I'm not talking in the school, I'm, in the entire county, we were averaging two cases a day. And we're now averaging over thirty cases a day. So. Uh, you know, we had a huge spike from when we started school in a hybrid model, which wasn't even fully in person, right? So the likelihood of a student or a staff member to get COVID. In the community, not at school, but in the community now is fifteen times higher than when we started school. So that's why it's smart to stay virtual now. Now, you know, the way these spikes work is they take several weeks to peak and then they take several weeks to dissipate. And um, there's no clear sign that it's dissipating right now. Um, you know, this last weekend was a little lighter than the weekend before, you know, we're still averaging over two hundred cases a week, two weeks in a row. Um, so I can't even say whether we're done peaking or not. Um, but it's going to, we're already through, almost through with the end of November. It's going to take all of December to start a decline. To the point where maybe we're even close to two cases a day come the start of the second semester. So I, I don't think that it's really optimistic to think that the, the numbers are going to look as good as they look this summer by January. I think that's, that's unlikely to happen. The next thing about the vaccine. Um, obviously that is the, probably the quickest way we can protect our most vulnerable. Which is why this whole thing is, is why we're all talking about this, right? We just don't want the, the disease to spread rapidly. And put people in the hospital or in the grave. And um, I think the earliest people are going to get their first vaccine is maybe end of December. Okay, and I'm talking like maybe nursing homes and healthcare workers. Now remember, it's a two-shot vaccine and it's four weeks apart. So, and it won't be effective until you've had both shots. So we're looking at. If, if all the cards fall into place and all the news is all about how this is a logistical nightmare, all right, but if all, if everything works as it should. Our highest risk population should be getting vaccines even in Iowa County by the end of December. And then getting their second vaccine by the end of January. And after that, if that is successful, then start going, going into February, March, then we can start feeling confident that those people who have been vaccinated are. Protected as we hoped, you know what I mean? So that's kind of the trajectory we're looking at. So um, and then my last point about the. The um, the mental health aspect. I think you raise a great point, Larry, and. The, this pandemic has had negative mental health ramifications on everybody, especially these kids, right? And um, what I'm trying to balance out is the mental health ramifications of the whole thing, right? So it's not like we're virtual, it's a stressful mess and everyone is depressed. And when we're back in hybrid model, everyone's happy-go-lucky, right? It's, it's not that black and white. The hybrid model was a huge stress on the staff and. Um, you know, I got multiple comments saying that the staff are almost relieved to be able to focus completely on virtual for a while. From their mental standpoint, you know, I think the kids, uh, you know, it's, I'm sure it's mixed, but I know if, if there's consistency. Kids like consistency, they like structure, and even though virtual is less than ideal, they get used to a rhythm and maybe they start feeling a little better about it. And uh, so there's. There's mental health negativity to being in the hybrid model too, as far as uh, not knowing if I'm going to get sick or. Being there sick or having to come home again because I was in school and now I'm sick, or now my family member's sick and I get pulled home, or you know, there's, there's. It's not as black and white, so I'm trying to weigh which is, you know, which is more detrimental, you know, which choice, right? Um, and I certainly struggle with that. And, you know, as an aside, you know, Caitlin and I have met separately. To say, hey, are you seeing any, you know, depressed kids in the clinic coming in saying that they're feeling socially isolated? Are there any. Suicidal threats that you're hearing about and vice versa? How can we help these kids? And so we've been brainstorming about ideas to help these kids interact more, and some of these ideas came out of that, you know, these middle school uh. Group times and, and identifying kids and, and doing more personal touches, assigning mentors, that kind of thing. You know, all of that, again, is less than ideal, but it's, it's a way to try to temper things. And I think, you know, allowing kids to play sports is, is one part of that, not insignificant for those athletes. But to your, to your point, it's not all, all students, right? So how do we do that? And um, I think there's a, there's a very high likelihood that, you know, if we go back to school for a week before semester's out. You know, we'll just, it, it, it's just not worth the risk of sending sick people to school and, and bringing them all home. And I think if we have a clear plan as soon as possible for when we're going to end virtual. Then I think we all can keep deep breath and just accept the way it is and, and plan for it moving forward. So um. You know, I, I, I'm going to support going back to January eight, you know, on January eighteenth. Um, but, you know, I'm hopeful that if cases start declining, you know, and, and we no longer have. You know, seven active cases and eighty-one cases, you know, in quarantine, we don't have any of that. Then, you know, we can have a real discussion about what returning to in-person really means and really should look like in the second semester. I, I, I'm, I'm ready to have that discussion, but. I think for now, um, uh, I think the situation is, is not good and it's not going to get a whole lot better. Uh, before the, the end of the second semester.
That's good information, Dr. Dunn. I, I do have a question for you. If you don't mind answering it, or try, try to answer it. So, so you have a, a child that, that. Is, is anxious, depressed, stressed, whatever. How likely are they to, to call the doctor's office or call Caitlin and say, well, I'm, I'm feeling depressed today? I think that is the risk we take. I, I think there, there could be kids that we, that. Even though we're trying to do the best we can, there could be kids that we miss. And if, if anybody else is listening to this from area schools, please pay attention because this is not only to my point. To, to get these, to give these kids hope, to get them some face-to-face time somehow, I think is so crucial.
Well, you know, I mean, I, I get your point, you know, I mean, uh, so how do I identify these kids, right?
Yeah, it, it's like, it's as easy as, as putting an email out to parents, saying.
It's, no.
Watch your kids.
No, it's not. It's, it's a lot of things, right? It's when kids come in for their well-child visit, you know. For their routine vaccines or, or whatever. I say, hey, how's virtual school going? Ask the mom, how's virtual school going? You know, I'm really interested in how this is affecting you, you know, so. I'm asking people as they come in, even for separate issues. Then you've got the teachers that. You know, have their small cohorts on Zoom who are, you know, scanning the room on Zoom, kids that are engaged, you know, or not engaged or not present at all. You know, and teachers are setting up flags that say, I'm, I'm worried about this kid, I'm worried about this kid, they're not, they're not with me, you know? And, you know, that's where their, their meetings on Wednesdays and they, you know, they report them to Caitlin and, and Angie, so that's another way to identify it. And um, you know, and then of course you look at academic performance, you know, but, you know, it, it's the same as if they're all in school. You know, it's, how do you miss that kid who's going to end up being the active shooter, right? That kid who's, who's being depressed and bullied and how do you identify them, right? Because they're not going to self-identify. It's all about just being aware. So as long as the staff and teachers and parents and physicians and community members. Are all aware that this is putting a stress on the entire school community. You know, and.
This certainly is.
Call for help when we see it.
Certainly the change for, for the entire age population, but. Most parents are back to work. I mean, I mean, they have that social interaction. Most parents aren't staying at home with their kids.
Right.
I mean, they have a job, they got to work.
Right.
And uh, it's the kids that are taking the brunt of the change of this pandemic during the school year.
I totally agree, and I'm equally worried about that, Larry, and that's why I'm asking the administrators, you know, can we get those kids into, into the school building? You know, where there, there is at least some human contact, so they're not home alone, you know, while their parents are at work. And, you know, I think if we know of any of those kids, we should, we should bring them in and. Put them in the library with one or two other kids and put them on a computer and say, hey, how's, you checking with them every couple hours? Say, hey, how's it going? You, Zoom's going okay, you know, and. You, you know, I, I don't know, but to, to your point, I mean, I think that there's creative solutions. Instead of. You know, bringing everyone back for a party. You know, I just, that's just not what's recommended right now in, in any case.
I, I would like to jump in a little bit, guys. Um, I, I will go with the ad hoc committee and propose that we have a meeting. Is sometime mutually agreeable prior to that January eighteenth. I understand the psychology of problems of issue with kids. I think schools are so much better prepared these days to try to. Meet those needs. It's like Aaron said, you know, even when kids are in school, they're busy trying to identify students that are falling behind. That are feeling bullied, that are feeling emotionally challenged, and I think everybody's antenna is even higher right now than normal. So the emotional aspects are there, no doubt. I, I agree with Larry completely. I think also the antennas are much higher than usual because of that. I propose we go along. I propose we go along with the ad hoc committee and that we also schedule an earlier meeting. At you guys' whatever you think an appropriate interval is, but all the things that they've said make very good logical sense based on the data. That's what I would say.
Is is that meeting, Doc? Is that one with with like the board and them combined? Is that what you want? I'm game with that.
I I I would have both, you know, sometime, for example, like another month and then but have the the families and the teachers need a plan. And I think of the January, I think that's simple, but if we meet earlier and we see that the data's changed. Great, maybe we'll change the system.
Is that a motion, Doc?
I will make that a motion. I still don't have the the date for the earlier meeting, though.
What what was? Repeat the motion then.
I make the motion that we accept the recommendations of January 18th to continue the schooling in virtual. With a meeting to occur, let's say thirty days from now to see if that plan could be changed. That's the end of the motion.
I I will second that motion then.
What's thirty days from now? Twenty-third? That'd be twenty-eight days. Thirty thirty would be Christmas?
Yes.
So we have, we've been meeting almost every two weeks. Could we meet December twenty-eighth? We're going to meet the fourteenth. Could we meet the twenty-eighth?
That would that would put you off.
Sure, why not? I can. I feel trapped in my house.
I can meet the twenty-eighth, Joni.
We have the meeting and the next meeting on December fourteenth, correct?
Correct, the two-week间隔 is the twenty-eighth.
I personally would like to see, wait, we don't have a second on the table here, sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry, you did second. I would like to see personally, kind of like we we had discussed way at the beginning again. That possible plan, Mr. Austin, that we had discussed. Just to see if it can work, because if this is for the long haul, if this thing keeps getting pushed back month by month by month.
So so something, yeah, can I can I talk just for a couple minutes? Is that fine?
You got like, you got three minutes.
Alright, um, I hopefully don't need all that. So something that um. Was suggested by somebody else is to obviously look at some sort of accommodation. We've heard we've. A lot of our teachers over the last couple of weeks during advisory and stuff have been talking with our students and asking, okay, so. How's virtual going? What can make it better? How can we do better here, this and that? And we're getting a lot of good suggestions from kids at this point, which is awesome, because that's what we want to see, right? We want to see them advocate for themselves and move forward. And one of the things that they're. Really saying is they need more time to connect with the teachers, like more office hour type things. Uh, one of the suggestions was to kind of mix or mingle. Like last spring's model kind of with this model where it'd be a little bit different looking. That's something that we've kind of looked at the last couple of days. Um, I've talked to some different teachers. Mr. Carey can pop in here and talk too. As he sees fit, but um, you know, where there's potential that we could do like a core day versus on core day. Provide more office hour type touches, where you know, we were talking last time with what does it look like to have more of a. Morning Zoom every day with every kid. Um, and that's kind of what this would do. It wouldn't be all eight hours, but it would be. You know, they'd have four classes on the first Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then the other four classes Tuesday, Thursday, so core versus encore. Which is a it's an option. It's something that obviously we need to dig into a little bit more, but I've been working on. Uh, Mr. Carey, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, yeah, I'll just let the school board know that. So I've had multiple meetings with students. I'm also part of the ad hoc committee, so I was going to jump in a couple of different times, but um, so I have different angles coming at this. The kids overwhelmingly seem to come at that, uh, um, it's the. It's the off lecture time that they're struggling with. So they're at home, they're they're doing their homework like they're supposed to be doing and they have a problem. They can't access the teacher, they shoot them an email and the teacher can't get back to them for, you know, that particular day, which causes anxiety on the student. That wants to turn something in that day, you know? Um, so the ability to have your lecture time and then have time afterwards, different hours. Uh, seems really beneficial at the high school level. So working on something like that where we can do. Your lecture times, which we can do virtually much better, because right now we're running a hybrid system in a virtual world. So basically, if you think of like, say, an algebra teacher is going to run six algebra classes a day with ten students. Where in a virtual setting, they could actually run thirty kids one time or twice. And then have more open time to answer questions and stuff later, which is what the students seem to be advocating for. Um, so that's something we're kind of looking into trying to find a way to do that. Um, I will also note that in the ad hoc committee meeting, I originally was holding out not wanting the eighteenth. Because I want my students back for mental reasons too. Um, and I was proposing, wanted it to be more like January fourth. I'm a semester teacher. However, after listening to the experts and listening to everything going on, I then did say, well, what boxes did the eighteen check? And it does check the medical box, uh, it checks the scheduling box, it checks the non-yo-yo box. And it did seem like the best option, um, because the students get consistency. We know that we can run that. And we can modify the schedule that Nate wants right now to use that for this time. If we don't have that, and as and as much as I want to come back the week before Christmas as well, I truly, truly do want to do that. If we do that, then it's hard to get a model that we can use and then change back and then use.
That that's the hardest part, probably. Mr. Carey's right there in the sense of that yo-yoing effect, right? Right now, our model was we're in person and our virtual is the same because we knew that we could come back and forth at any point in time. If we know we're going a longer period of time, this may be the time to look at something in that nature.
Doctor Dunn?
I love the proposal that Mr. Austin, you and Mr. Carey are talking about. Um, and I love how you guys are continuing to look for student feedback and trying to be better and and make this a better experience. Uh, my question is, is this something that you guys are kind of, it's kind of a work in progress? And it could be implemented at any point during this virtual experience, even mid semester? Or is this something you're you're thinking you're you're thinking for second semester to start?
You know, I ideally, I would say, obviously, it's best not to change things on kids middle of the time. But you know, I think that's something that I need to unpack to my staff. We were kind of waiting to see where your guys' meeting went tonight. Before I brought up this potential idea with the staff, but I did want you to obviously tell you what the kids are looking for, what we're hearing. Um, so that's something that I, Ms. Doll and I need to talk a little bit more about it and kind of see what that looks like. I have a staff meeting set for tomorrow, um, that I can certainly bring it up and we can look at it and we can talk about it. Because I think it's something that if we're going to be an extended period of virtual time, it might be the best thing to obviously go to. Um.
I would definitely want to run it now. We were waiting for tonight to figure out what what you guys decide. Because if we can run this as call it the the beta version, you know, through Christmas here and then figure out. That's where that other two weeks afterwards comes in too. So the goal is to.
Yep.
Yeah, and not go next semester and then try to make changes, get all those kinks worked out so that hopefully next semester is good. Let's hope we're not virtual anyway, but um, given the fact that it's a possibility, a reasonable possibility, let's let's iron those out now. But if we're only out for a week, we can't, we can't do that. That's the issue comes in with the yo-yo.
I will, I will tell you, we're never going to stop looking at ways to improve the models that every building's in. Because obviously, we want to get back to normal as soon as we can.
I would rather see a yo-yo between all in-person and then this other system that you guys might be working on. As opposed to a hybrid and virtual yo-yo. To me, it makes.
Sure.
But.
One of the, one of the difficult parts is the differences in, oops, sorry, Mr. Carey, go ahead.
I was just telling Nate that I think a lot of the staff gets in that scenario where when we started the hybrid system, the the thought process is that, hey. We can do this for a longer period of time. The fact that we've jumped out of it, I think puts the. Likelihood that if that if all in-person thing might happen versus um, the hybrid system. Again, safety is a huge portion of that. It depends on where we're at in this whole parable of the um, COVID. But but absolutely, I think it does move that needle towards that a little bit.
Kyle.
I forgot what I was going to say, so.
Thanks for the uh, the work you've done, Matt. And I I would agree with you, Kyle, the sooner the better.
If you remember, whatever happened, though, it'll be the domino effect to the middle school because of the care.
Right.
Alright, um, do we have any more on the motion? Any more discussion?
Just a formality, I mean, should we amend the motion to say approximately thirty days from now? Or does it matter? You put December twenty-eighth?
I did.
Is that okay with Mr. uh, with Everett?
Doc, I changed your motion to say December twenty-eighth instead of thirty days. Is that okay?
You're on mute, Doc.
You gave a thumbs up, that's good.
Okay. So the motion is to accept the ad hoc recommendation that it be virtual through January.
There, I got it, yes. I'm using somebody else's computer.
Be virtual and come back January eighteenth, but the meeting to occur on December twenty-eighth to see if that plan can be changed.
Okay, any more on the motion? Uh, Angie, call the question, please.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Stappus.
No.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Chamber, uh, Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, and on to action items, sports update.
We got Ms. Doll here, she can kind of give an update. I had sent out a. Notice from the small super tents, kind of the kind of a small plan as to how we would hold winter sports. Um, and then I kind of gave an update on what some of the conference schools are doing as far as spectators. Um, and Ms. Doll, please jump in. If I misspeak, Southwestern, Fenimore and Middle Point, right now, their school boards have said no fans. Um, and Southwestern was until further notice. Fenimore and Middle Point both said at least through December and then would reevaluate. Everybody has the ability to broadcast their contests. So we use Huddle to live stream, we live stream our football games, we live stream volleyball, we can continue to do that for basketball and wrestling. The other school districts in the conference, um, we're looking at either doing two tickets per player for home and visitor. Some some of the teams, some of the schools were looking at four tickets per home player and two for visitors. But that's kind of where they were, they were standing. They were looking at using um. Cleaning the ball at least three, like a basketball game, they would clean the basketball at least three times within the course of the game. One time at least at the start, play in the first half, then at halftime, the ball will be cleaned and then another time. So they're trying to make sure that they're doing and taking precautionary measures to try to clean. Everybody will be required to wear a mask, including athletes, spectators, officials, game workers. So on so forth. So I had sent that out for you. Um, Vicki, anything else you want to add or need?
No, I mean, the big thing that the conference was in agreement about wearing masks, whether whether or not there's a a mask mandate. And I've even received emails from schools, um, not a non-conference opponents. That said, if if we're not going to wear masks, they're not going to play us and they want to cancel the game. And I assured them that we were definitely going to be wearing masks, so.
Are there any recommendations from you or the administration to change what's currently in place? Here at the district from from a sports standpoint?
Are you talking about fans?
Uh, anything?
No, I I want to stick with the no, the no fans definitely right now with the situation.
And Angie, remind me, the motion was no fans until a certain date, is that right? January?
Through December, through December is what we had said.
Okay, so we could, we could change that either at the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth meetings?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have, uh, you know, with a football team being quarantined, it does have an impact right now. For some of our wrestlers and some of the boys' basketball players as well. So coaches are all aware of those kinds of things and abiding by those guidelines.
Our neighboring schools, Mitch, are are they following through with their. Uh, projected sports programs? Has anybody canceled, delayed?
Um, I had just heard. Dodgeville School District met this afternoon and is pushing back their virtual. And they're holding up any kind of winter sports right now. Um, they're looking at coming back on the seventh, and that's when they would look to resume their winter sports programs.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you'd heard that yet, Vicki, from Dodgeville's A D.
Yeah, I I got an email and um, there were some schools that uh, pushed back their girls' basketball practice a week. So they started today instead of last Monday. But I haven't heard of any boys' programs other than um, Dodgeville right now, putting out the stuff.
And I think that I think the biggest issue every district is having is there was an alternative for the fall. To potentially play in the spring. There's there is no, there is no second opportunity for any of the winter sports. I think that's where most schools are kind of like, do we try? Do we try to provide this? Let's provide this to the best of our ability for as long as we can and whatever happens, happens. But I think most schools are trying to at least offer the winter sports for that reason.
Have you been getting any negative feedback from parents not being able to attend?
No, no, um, and it's probably, you know, this is the second time we've talked about it on. You know, live at a board meeting, but I have not heard anything other than a apparent concern about the potential for an injury. You know, if if my child gets hurt. You know, then then it's a phone call away for me to come and at least be there and escort my child or meet my child somewhere. A valid concern. Um, I know there have been plenty of times where. In in my, I I won't say plenty of times, but there's been times in my coaching career where someone was injured and a parent was not there. We always took along any kind of insurance information, emergency contact information. And and we're able to reach out, you know, through cell phone or they say, hey, I just want you to know. You know, if it's bad enough, an ambulance would would take a child somewhere. Uh, otherwise, it's, there's been a lot of times where it's been a phone call saying, hey, can you meet me at school? You know, for me in the winter sports, it's always been your daughter, you know, I'm concerned about an ACL injury. Your daughter is, will ride home with us, she's as comfortable as we can make her, but can you meet us at school? Uh, I've had to do things like that in the past. Um, but other than, other than the one parent with the injury concern, I I've not heard anyone else reach out.
You know, I've heard that same concern and I was, that made me think, Vicki, I wonder if it would be. Reasonable to make sure that their every player on the team. Has an emergency contact that's that's on call during that game, you know, especially away games.
Yeah, we we.
So you always have a point person to call for each player, should there be an injury?
Yeah, we have emergency forms that the kids put in at the beginning of the year and has all all that contact info.
Okay, I figured, alright.
Yep.
And 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 right now, i- if it's a conference game, Southwestern and and Fenimore would be the only two that a parent would not be allowed to attend. Otherwise, um, everybody else is allowing. Would allow at least two. Players, you know, two tickets per player for an away team. So.
So I guess on the action item, is it just to basically make a motion to maintain?
If you make no motion, if you decide to table that, it it continues with our current status of no fans through through December.
So there's nothing needed on this.
Right, you just need to table that.
I think.
Well, well, I I think we should revisit it on our board meeting, the December fourteenth.
For the fans, Doc?
Yes.
Generals? Yeah, just in general, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll I'll make a motion to table this issue till the fourteenth.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? Angie, call the question, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stappus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. Uh, that's it. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn? Would anybody like to second that?
I'll second. All right.
Thank you to the committee and admin team, Mr. Carey, Caitlin, Angie. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Happy Easter.